About seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none. Somebody wish to move the agenda as presented?
Move.
Any questions on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the minutes on November the 12th. Any questions?
I'll send it over.
Georgie moves on. Any question on Georgie Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Moving on to the special meeting minutes. Any questions on them? Okay, Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. The lady from Starz Foundation will be late a little bit, so I'm asking if it's okay if we just move on to the 4.2. Nikki and Jolie, is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, if you want, come on. Floor's yours.
So, we're here today just to talk about our mother's property taxes. Unfortunately, she passed away on the 7th of July, and unbeknownst to us, she hadn't paid her property taxes, which were due June 29th. She was at her full capacity, meaning that she could make her own decisions of her finances and medical decisions and all that, up until two days before she passed away. We then received on October, in October 22nd, it stated, a letter from Skates and Partners that told us like what her property taxes were. They were the individuals that are auditing the town. And unbeknownst to us, we looked at it, we thought it was a little bit high, because she usually paid about $1,800, and it was $1,929. And when we came to the town, we found out she was being charged $136 in late fees. But we were not made aware of this. This was a bill that we had not known that didn't get paid. There was no notice saying late payment, there was nothing. So we are here to sort of address, you know, should we be paying the late fees? Because this is a bill that we as, you know, executors of her estate and such did not know about. There was no notice given to us, and four months' worth of late fees have built up on it. Had there been a late payment notice, we would have paid them. Like, payment is not the issue, it's that we were not notified. And this would have gone on for a year had we not gotten the letter from the accountant's auditing. So we want to talk about the policies surrounding that. We were told that we do not, that the Town of Vulcan does not legally have to send out any letters pertaining to overdue accounts on their property taxes. And it doesn't matter, they don't really care, is what one of the town, like, the people that work for the town, until three and a half years later.
Thirty months is the rule or whatever.
Yeah, I guess. So what we're saying is that how can the Town of Vulcan be charging late fees on a bill that, under these circumstances, under any circumstances, whether someone has dementia and hasn't paid for it, but the family doesn't know? But the fact that no letter was sent out when towns comparable to Vulcan send out letters?
Some send them out monthly, some send them out quarterly, just to let you know that your property taxes are overdue.
So we could have gone one year accruing late fees on a bill we did not know needed to be paid.
Until then, on top of paying last, like, you know, this year is then next year is now, wait fee charges on top of that.
And they can pound.
You know, buy some money to come up with to keep the property from foreclosing.
Yes, in a sense, so. So what we're here addressing Town Council is when I talked to Kim Fock on the phone, he did not, well, one, allow me to speak, and two, just had absolutely no desire to even consider the option of waiving any of the fees, considering it was a bill that we were not aware of. The town water bill, if we were late on the town water bill, it would have shown up in two months on another notice. If we were late on, you know, direct energy, Acco, anything, we would have been told about that every month. Credit cards, same thing. We understand that you're not legally obligated to be sending out letters, but how many people have been stuck in this position? Who, maybe their children live out in Calgary, or Edmonton, or B.C., and are stuck in the same predicament, but have a year's worth of late fees? So we want to talk about, you know, the policy and, you know, maybe not getting our fees waived, but there needs to be a policy change, considering Nanton, and Claire's Home, and High River all send out notices.
Any questions for Nikki and Jolie?
So you're not really looking for the late fees to be waived? You just want us to look at changing that policy for somebody else in this?
Changing the policy, because I don't think we're the only people that this has happened to. You know, whether it's somebody who has an ill family member, or a family member who, you know, is maybe going through early onset dementia, and has just forgotten to pay this bill. Now that family is stuck with not only, because children don't know their parents' finances until it's too late. And I mean, like, Mom hasn't even been gone five months. You know, and like, then we're stuck with, like, we gladly pay her property taxes, but then we're stuck with late fees that we didn't even know existed on a bill. We had no idea hadn't been paid. And that, none of this would have been something that we would have found out until after probate is done, and that's six months to a year.
Okay. Any other questions for? We'd like to get some more information, you know, from other municipalities, what their bylaw says. You are correct, our bylaw has, you know, is been in place for, since 1998. And there, you know, maybe there is an opportunity to update the bylaw. According to the MGA, once you have a bylaw, you have to follow the bylaw until it's amended or altered. So, you know, it'd be nice for us to have an opportunity to do some, you know, to find out exactly what the other municipalities, the three that you had mentioned for sure, and if not more, what they do offer. I mean, we do offer a monthly payment plan, which, you know, some people do. And we also offer a plan that's through the, through your, if you have a loan, or, you know, sometimes your bank pays your taxes. So again, that would have been one, that would have flagged it earlier. The bank would have flagged it, said that, hey, unless the account was frozen, whether they pay on a monthly basis, or vice versa. So, you know, I think it's only fair for, we didn't know exactly what, you know, your letter pertained to, because it was just, it doesn't say exactly what it is, other than just late fees for your mom's property. So we haven't had enough opportunity to review exactly, you know, the pros and the cons, and how many accounts we have that, you know, fall into this category, or don't fall into this category. Most of the times, once the lawyer, lawyers are contacted, they'll, they contact the town for, ask for where the taxes sit. And obviously, your lawyer never did that, you know, contacted the town, find out where.
We've had extenuating circumstances when it comes to probate, which is not, that's out of our control.
Which is out of our control, and it's probably something that numerous people go through.
Yeah. And again, like I said, we have to look at, you know, to see what, you know, council feels is fair. You know, I appreciate that, you know, timing wasn't probably the best. Generally, tax notices are sent out in May, you know, and they're expected to be paid by that period of time. And then they, we usually do send out a notice in June that says that taxes haven't been paid, so that, you know, to remind the homeowner that, you know, you received a notice, and they go from that. So we just want to make sure that those things were followed and done, and prior to seeing what direction we can go.
When we just, when we did look at her bill, it actually said that property taxes aren't due until the 29th of June.
Correct, yes.
So, as much as like a letter helps, like, in June, when they're still not due until the end of June, and like, people aren't in arrears until they hit June 29th, right?
And we've always tried to promote, to be honest with you, for us especially, a monthly, you know, payment of taxes. A lot of people do pay on a monthly basis, a lot don't. They feel that they can get more interest off the money in the bank, and just walking in on the 29th, or the 28th, or whatever the last day of the month is, and paying the taxes. But, yeah, I think that, I'm not sure what the rest of anybody else has to say, but I think that it's only fair that we get an opportunity to review what other communities are doing, review our policy, bring it up, and see if there's some changes that need to be done, what the numbers are. I mean, you know, again, like I said, there could be other people in the community that fit into the same category. Again, there might not be any. You might be the first that, I mean, you're the first that's come to this council. You're the first that's ever come to council since I've been on council.
Right.
In, you know, 20 years, that has ever asked for. Now, sometimes some try and make it to the town administration and make a deal prior to the, you know, say they'll come up with a plan to pay off the taxes, and... But once the penalties, according to the MGA, once the penalty is applied, we can't remove it.
You can't remove it, which we understand.
We understand.
We're just hoping that, you know, maybe a letter, whether it's quarterly, monthly, or whatever, could maybe be sent out for...
And again, I think that's something that we need to look into to see, you know, what it entails, and, you know, and, you know... And you're right, you know, a lot of residents, or I shouldn't say a lot, some people don't pay their taxes until, you know, last day, or they leave it for the next year, the two years, or then it comes up for sale, and they end up having to pick up the taxes and all their penalties, and the penalties aren't pleasant.
Right.
And it is supposed to be a deterrent, the penalty, to promote people to pay their taxes on time. We as a municipality borrow money to cover for taxes that aren't being paid, to try and get us through the year. That's partly why we promote that monthly paying process, so you kind of pay your first six months in advance, and then you, theoretically, and, yeah, and then the next six, six months after the penalty, so there's no penalty on those ones there too, but, so, we need to, I think we need an opportunity to look into a little better, and try and probably bring it back to the December meeting.
Okay.
And so that we can make a decision, and, you know, send you out, so you won't hear back from us until after that, so we can get the administration to do some studying on what other communities are doing, and, you know, whether it's a quarterly letter, or a monthly letter after, or, you know, type of thing. So there's, you know, a cost to that too, and what our numbers are, so.
Okay.
Great, well, we appreciate you for giving it to our attention, and thank you very much. And, like I said, we'll, the direct administration to do it, and then bring it back.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so we'll add that one to the agenda under new business, I guess.
Agenda 7.5?
Yes, 7.5, is that it? I'll need a motion to amend the agenda at this, Paul Lufit.
I'm sorry.
At Paul Lufit, at number 4.2. Okay, any question on additions, or maybe the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on, since Starz still isn't here, we'll move on to the seeds to grow.
Hello, thank you again for seeing us. Thank you for taking the time. As, you know, this is Ray, Ray is the president of Vbit, and he was asked to speak beforehand, before I kind of address you, so I'll just let him have it.
All right, so, yeah, before Carmen gets started, I'd just like to clear the air, because as you know, we had a motion that Lauren presented, I think in March, about funding for VTV, and I just wanted to explain to you what happened. So I did talk to Kim in March, as we sort of came up with a plan to, you know, apply for ongoing things, and he sort of listed some conditions we need to appear for council. And then there'll be a review, so I took that into consideration. And then a few things sort of took this sideways a little bit. Like, in June, Vbit made a motion to launch VTV into Seeds to Grow, so that was our thing. We try to be an incubator of ideas and innovation, like the Health Foundation, or the VAS group. We try to, we start ideas, but not so much around them, you know, with somebody else. So, so when that motion was made to pass on Vbit, I had a lot of emotional and financial investment in VTV, just like this council, or the previous councils did. So it's sort of, I sort of deleted those files from my limited brain space, and I just kind of, you know, put those files away, sort of thing, and didn't think of it very much until September. And then we thought we maybe could help Seeds to Grow apply, you know, reapply for that money. But I didn't, I didn't go back to that letter and really look what it said. So I missed the part about the financial reports. And so that left me with you guys, whether you supported the motion or not. And I would have done that as well too, you'd have to deny that motion because there was no financial report. So that's, that's kind of what happened there, and I'd just like to clear that. But it's important to go forward, sort of thing, and we certainly support VTV and its things, and it's, I think it's good. I just have a short little story about two ladies in the community that, they were talking to each other, and I was just listening to them, and they were just talking about the way things are communicated around the community, like, and one lady missed an event, and she said, "Well, where does it post that I didn't see it here or there?" And the other lady said, "Well, I saw it on VTV, that's where I saw it, and I came up." And then she also said that she listens to the town council meetings as well too, so she's one of the followers of that. So it's just, I think it's a good community effort, and it connects people, it educates people, and inspires people in this community, and I think it's a, and it's a good thing. And you have a great spark plug lady here to offer to run it, and I think it's a worthwhile effort. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but I'll try to look for Carmen.
Just before you move on. That, asking for the financial reports is not new to any of our groups that we contribute funds to.
Yes.
And matter of fact, you know, we had two groups that asked for funding to proceed into our 2019 capital, or operating budget, and they supplied us with their financial reports. So it's not like we're just picking on Vbit, or any other group. And, you know, the, so I think that, that if, if a group would like to, you know, ask for funds, and it was stated in the letter, you know, that these funds were contributed to your organization, you know, pending, you know, receiving the financial statements. And so it wasn't like we hid it away from you, and yet, according to this letter that's in front of me now, from Carmen, it kind of slates up, says that, you know, we're kind of slated Vbit, and that we're asking, almost asking for something that's not normally asked by other groups. And I think that's a fallacy, it's never been, it's been in our bylaws for some period of time. If you go onto our website, you can find our bylaws, it states how we do our donations to our organizations. And so it's not a new fallacy or philosophy that's been implemented in the last little while.
Yeah, and, I mean, I agree, I don't think this council is trying to pick on Vbit at all too. And it, and just, like, reading the newspaper article too, it was quite accurate, and it did, you know, reflect it. But I think some people did maybe get the impression that that was, you know, the council was against Vbit, was not true. We just didn't have the complete information for it.
I'm sorry, just kind of being on other community groups as well. Unfortunately, this isn't a new issue with Vbit. Like, in terms of being held accountable for financial statements and reporting in accordance with funds either being jointly generated or given to. And so I guess my question is, so have the financial reports for the last funding came through already?
No, so, so we went to, we went to Kim in March and said we would like to have a continuing fund, sort of thing, and outlined what the bylaws say that we need to do.
No, I'm aware of it, so now that you're aware of them, has everything been sent over?
No, I talked to Kim, and, you know, right after this happened, I said, "Do you require now these records?" And he said, "Not at this time," so, but having said that, it'd be, you know, if you wanted to.
Well, Vbit's a nonprofit, and as such, it is subject to any yearly audits, so anybody can have access to books at any time if they wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, we do have our financial statements, and if you require them, that I would certainly do that. But just my conversation with Kim, he said it's not necessary, it's just, it's sort of a past event, but... So, and you said there's other times that we were...
Like, just in terms of, I just know other community groups that are dealing with kind of the same issue of getting financial statements and reports for other projects. But, and that's kind of the concerning thing, from my point of view, is, you know, there's one condition, and that's just we get your financial reporting, and that one condition isn't even met. Does that make sense?
Totally, and I, like I said, I take responsibility for missing that. I just assumed that, you know, that, and I just honestly didn't go back to that letter and look at it, so. But it's, as far as I'm aware, this is the only time that we've missed such a commitment, as far as financial statements are.
Well, I mean, with the chamber right now, it's dealing with the grants, and that's public record. It's having the exact same issue. So I'm not sure how you could say, like, this is the only situation that it's applying to.
Yeah, well, the chamber thing, as far as I'm concerned, we're, we're having a, that's sort of ongoing for us.
The Chamber with the Revitalization Project, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so that one is just due at the end of this month. Everything was completed on the project, so the project was handed in to the, to Colleen. Colleen's in charge of it, so everything is just handed to her, so, I mean, the project's not even up until the end of the month. All the financial reports have been submitted to Vbit, and then Vbit will process or do whatever.
And, yes.
But the chamber also just came in, so it's this, this new group that kind of came in to this project that is two years in the go, they're coming in one month before the project ends. So it is really hard, because the communication is, wasn't there, but is trying to be there. We're trying to catch them up on stuff, so again, it's not like anybody is hiding anything. It's not like there, it's just trying to bring people up to speed on what is going on with that downtown revitalization project. But also with that project, because that's the CARES Fund that you're talking about, it has three different aspects to it. So there is the downtown revitalization, which I'm sure everybody has seen me walking around town with a clipboard, going to businesses, and, you know, so it has been done, and our reportings are going out at, this week, actually. So I'm just waiting for some information from Community Futures, and once I have it, they'll be going out. The final report has already been given to the new chamber, and that was actually given a month ago, so I have the emails.
I'm on the chamber.
So that was a communication problem with David, actually, because he was the secretary, because if you do look at the meeting minutes, it was saying that I was to give the communications.
Can I just interpret a bit, I mean, that's a separate, right? Like, it's just, you know, asking pretty good of why, but that's just kind of where my concern comes from, is, you know, something like that.
And I would, I would say to you that, I mean, that's not settled yet. We have seen that, oh, she's our treasurer, and she's working on that, and Colleen. And they hope to have that, that package in place as far as that, and it's all tied into the CARES Fund as well too, so they'll all last a bit together, so they'll have that completed this week, so.
What, it's not until the end of the month?
But the financial stuff won't be completed, and, I don't...
Okay, well, let's move back to your, your skating letter.
Well, I'm sorry if you thought that it was a little bit...
Well, when I first read it, if I could have ripped it up, I probably would have, but, but I did read it through, and then I, I usually read through everything twice at least. I'd probably read this one three or four times, and, like I said, if I had a delete button, I probably would have gone the first time, wouldn't have been able to read it the second, but I've never been slapped and then asked for funding after that, but anyway, go ahead.
Do you mind, like, because I honestly don't understand why that would come across? Because all I basically was trying to say is that the, I believe that the meeting minutes are very important, and that, that being able to document them in a video style is a way to avoid a lot of confusion as to what maybe is written, and maybe what is interpretive. It's a way to get, to get the truth. I mean, I raise here also, because a lot of people associate me with VTV. I pretty well am VTV, I'm the one who makes a lot of the videos, the entire content for it, mostly. And so when there is something that is reflecting poorly on VTV, it reflects poorly on my character. So that's why I wanted to come and to have the opportunity to clarify this. Pretty well, my beginning was saying that, that city managers know that in order to close the gaps between the government and citizens, and bringing the communities closer together, it is that communication. And one very effective way to communicate is by being able to see it, being able to hear it. And that also alleviates a lot of issues that are going on, so that if people do have questions as to why a motion was passed, or why it wasn't, they can refer to a video. Because, and, and yes, I did say this one line that I still hold to, where I said that it is important, because any working journalist will tell you that any efforts to edit a transcript of a meeting, so any efforts to record down an effective meeting, it can be lost. Because you're editing this two-hour meeting into some notes, jotting down notes, and it used to be that that was the way that it was, that's the way that people got to know what was happening during meetings. But now there's something much more effective, that video, that they can go to and hear what that person said at that time. So when you are trying to transcribe a meeting into digestible chunks, it can result into that miscommunication. And for me, that's what that was, it was a miscommunication. And that's what all of this is, is a miscommunication. And that's what I'm learning too on these revitalization projects. There is a lack of miscommunication in this town. I saw it every time that I went and spoke to a business owner, and did the interviews with the downtown revitalization. There is a lack of communication. And this is a very effective way to avoid that miscommunication, and it's a very useful tool. So when I am coming here today, I am not trying to say, "Hey, hire Seeds to Grow." I don't care if you hire Seeds to Grow. I'm not here for that purpose. My purpose is to be here so that this town has the best service that it can. I chose to make Vulcan my place to stay, and I want to be able to make it the best place to live. And if there's a miscommunication problem, and I have a tool that can help, that's what I'm here for. So in the article, you were talking about using iCompass. So I would like to give the opportunity to give my feedback and my personal point of view as a working professional in this field, so that you know what to expect with iCompass if you go with it, and make a proper decision if you want to go with it, or if you don't want to go with it, or, so that you are best equipped. So when I first looked at iCompass...
I'd appreciate it if you just left iCompass out of it. Give us the presentation on what you're proposing to offer. What Seeds to Grow is, last time you came, you said it was going to become a...
So right now, it's a Part Nine. It is working. It's on its own. What I can offer is the same thing that I have been doing, the town council meetings. I have provided you with a full breakdown of my budget, which pretty well takes the budget that you're given and breaks it down into my hours. So for the videos, usually each video takes anywhere between eighteen hours to produce. Now, that's just not editing, but that's a lot of wasted time. That's rendering, that's uploading. That's still time that you're going to have to deal with either way. But when I did my breakdown and I gave you a complete list, I broke it down to about eleven dollars an hour. So it's really not trying to be making any money here. It's learning, it's about providing this service that I think is really important for this town. And if there is a possible way to break that into a more effective way, absolutely, go for it, use it. But also know that it's an American company. It was started in Canada and it was bought out. So make sure if you do go that it is in Canadian dollars that you are getting your quotes from. So what I do is I provide an editing. So when I take the video that is given to me, it's broken down into twenty-minute sections. Because this camera is an HD camera. Unfortunately, it's one of the newer HD cameras that was just out in the market at that time. So its capability, it only records in twenty-minute slots, chunks. It does. Because it comes and it's all broken down in twenty minutes.
That's the recording device, not the camera.
The recording device. So there are cameras that do it, sorry, but so the recording device does it in twenty-minute chunks. So I take the recordings, I put it all into one beginning-to-end video. I also cut out any discussion, personal discussion by the county that happens before or after the meeting.
Town.
Town, sorry. I also play with the audio, so I raise up the audio so you can hear it a little bit more, so it's loud. Because there's no point in having a video if you can't hear it, right? As great as it is, it's a town meeting, you need to be able to hear what's being said. So I bump up the audio a little bit, I add graphics and export it. I also compress it so it's not such a huge file because as we are storing them on a hard drive, so all of the originals are stored on a hard drive and all of the edited versions are stored on hard drives. I make it so that they're compressed. And it's the compressing too for the uploading and streaming. And we use YouTube, which is the exact same thing that everybody will use because you don't want to be streaming it on your own because the storage cost is huge. That's why everybody uses YouTube. You send it private links because you eliminate that cost. So, but in order to do that, you need to use the compression. So what I do effectively is all of those editing, but I eliminate a lot of the hours that are being used or by the town, that can be used by the town. So I don't know if this is something, if you would proceed with another company, that you would still have to babysit the computers or watch the computers. Because when I'm exporting the information or when I'm compressing, my computer is pretty well inaccessible. I can't use it. Yes, I could theoretically get on it and do stuff, but because it's spending a lot of time and using a lot of information, you know, the computer just can't handle it and sometimes will crash. So it happens anytime. I was doing the Black Friday video, it's forty-five second video, and my computer crashed while I was looking at, I don't know, some, something really simple, like a Word document. And I went, oh, why is this crashing on a Word document? But it does. So that's something that you might have to really think about if someone like a secretary is going to be taking the notes, doing the video, uploading it. You might have to get a computer that is designated for that. So that might be an extra cost that you might have to look into. So those are just some things that might occur. I'm not saying that they will because my conversations with different companies are different than your conversations with them. So pretty well, I just want to say moving forward, please, if you want more information, I have given you a lot of information that are my concerns with it. Move forward with whatever you think is the best decision. But my point here and the reason why I came is to say that I think this is a really useful tool. And the reason why Ray came today is because, yes, I am associated with VTV and I do have a lot of people who come up to me in, on the streets, in a grocery store, who will say, I like this video, or when's the next town council going to be posted? Or when is this? When is that? They associate me with it. And I'm sorry, but I felt that it wasn't a very good representation, so I was looking for some clarity.
Okay, any questions?
I guess I just had one. It's Seeds to Grow, I understood last time to be a nonprofit society that you were forming?
Yeah, that's why I wanted to form it as a nonprofit, speaking with the lawyers because I did mention that all the information was at the lawyers. The best way to go to move forward was to turn it into a Part Nine, so that's what it is.
And what is a Part Nine?
It's basically... It's basically a nonprofit, but it does have the ability to make business decisions or more business projects, decisions.
So under that, would you be able to apply to the Alberta Society Act to become a society under that?
You could, I think...
No, no, the Part Nine, Part Nine is a, it's like a corporation. It's a...
Okay, so it is...
Yeah, but there's kind of the, you know, just how there's different, there's charities. So charities can give tax receipts and then there's societies. Societies are nonprofits, so they can't give tax receipts. Part Nines cannot give tax receipts, but can engage in different forms of business.
So really, it is...
Revenue, yeah, revenue generating.
Okay, so it isn't, so it wouldn't be able to fall into the Society Act then?
Not a Part Nine, no.
Okay.
And there's three different society levels too, so, you know, it's quite a... So last time when you were here, at least I did, I can't speak on the other behalf, but I felt that that's the direction you were going to go. And that's partly why on one area of your letter, it says that you're still VTV Television Networks. And then the other one, Seeds to Grow, and it just, so again, we're not sure. I wasn't sure whether it's, what type of corporation it is, is it limited or announced?
And that's why it was really, because all that information, because it was in July that we decided to go with the Seeds to Grow. So at that point, so we, everything was going to the lawyers and sitting down with the lawyers and really discussing with them because if I do something, I want to make sure I do it right. So I wanted to make sure that I had the best fit to start.
And you said you live in the county, but your address is 232 Douglas Wood Court, Southeast?
That's just because I'm lazy and I haven't changed it from my... I was just lazy.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that I was on the right page here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's where, you know, you talk about communication.
Yeah.
There's quite a errors in the communication from the two documents here, so.
And I have applied for one now just to alleviate that because someone did bring that up, so.
Okay, anything else for Carmen, Ray? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to come and...
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Great. Kim, just check on, see if Starz is here, so.
Sounds like...
I thought maybe you heard the helicopter coming.
We don't think you do that kind of delivery.
Sure. Come around and have a chair.
Thank you for being so patient.
No, that's not a problem. We moved on.
Oh, right, that's good. So glad.
So, the floor is yours.
If you'd like, I can start right from the beginning if you like.
Sure.
And if you go to that side, I can actually put the camera on you if you'd like.
Oh, not really, but...
Yeah, we do record our...
Our meetings are recorded, so.
Yes, no, I understand. I understand. I'm just thinking, I'm worse from where I'm from. Travels.
So first I'd like to thank you. Sounds like I know that there's a couple of new faces here since I last made a presentation to your town council. And I want to welcome you for being a municipal partner of Starz, a life-saving partner of Starz. So I hope that, you know, I visit all the councils that I work with. I've been doing this for, I just celebrated my twelfth anniversary at Starz. So I've been working with municipal councils all across the province now. So I get the pleasure of coming to visit you as well as the county. We see the county in a couple of weeks. And so I come annually to bring more information, keep your council well informed. So that's kind of a little bit of background for new faces. And my name is Glenda Farnin. I'm the Senior Municipal Relations Liaison for Starz. So there's been so much excitement and a lot of changes over the years for Starz and we're going to be going into some more changes. So it's really important, I feel, that we always remember where we came from. That is a very important aspect for all of us. And then we can really see how much we've grown and how much we've achieved together. So in the beginning, this is Dr. Powell, who was the original founding, founder of Starz as well as the CEO at the time. We have a new CEO now for the past five years. At the time, he was the Chief of Emergency Medicine at the Foothills Hospital. And he came across studies that showed that we in Alberta had fifty percent higher trauma-related death rates than in any other province in Canada. This greatly disturbed him and he thought, well, why is that? And how can that be? And because of our vast remote region and because we have so much vast industry as well, so this attributed to a lot of this. So then he started to recall how he, in the early days of his medical school, and how he had the opportunity to visit a MASH unit in Vietnam. And if helicopter EMS was saving lives during war times, why could we not implement that into everyday life? So that was kind of the beginnings of thinking about a service like Starz for Albertans. And so Starz was born out of necessity. He basically reached out to a lot of his fellow colleagues, doctors, nurses, paramedics, as well as a few businessmen that he knew. And then they reached out to the Lions Foundation of Alberta, who was instrumental in providing very significant funding to lease a helicopter. And he and his colleagues, they provided all of the services on a volunteer basis. They would go to the, to the mail every day to check and see whether or not there was enough funds in order to put fuel in the helicopter. And then they would wait for the calls and trying to work with, you know, our other resources to let them know that they were serviced, that it was here and ready. And then the fateful day came when we had the very first call for a Starz mission on December first, nineteen eighty-five, for this young lady, who at the time was a critically ill newborn in southern rural Alberta. Little did we know on that fateful day how that was going to radically change how critical care was going to be delivered in the rural areas. So we'll go through a lot of these, but I really wanted, it is an incredible history. So I wanted to provide it for you on paper so that you could have it and read it at your leisure. But some of the highlights are the fact that as soon as we began as a charitable society, which we have still, we still are today, thirty-three years later, December first is coming up very soon. And then we received formal recognition as an essential service. So from there, it just grew. And we started a base in Edmonton and we established the Emergency Link Center, which is the key component even today, working with nine-one-one dispatch. And then the Human-Patient Simulator Program, you know, where we have that traveling bus that goes around to all the different rural communities and we spend an entire day providing critical care training for your physicians and nurses. And these, we have specific donors who are committed to these programs for safety and education. So they provide the funds so that we can bring those programs out, work with the rural communities at no cost to your community. It's a vital aspect because most of the time, those people, those medical personnel are the first ones to touch the patient before we may arrive. So it's really important that we share that knowledge. Then we were the first civilian air carrier in Canada, other than military, that was allowed to have night vision goggles so that we could fly at night. And approximately fifty percent of our calls are at night. Next, please. And then more bases were to come. And then we celebrated twenty-five years of air in the air. And then we had affiliation agreements with three provinces. So we have affiliation agreement in place with Alberta Health Services until 2020. So let me assure you that we are in very high-level discussions with government as to where that will go. And then a ten-year agreement followed with the establishment of the Winnipeg Base. So with Manitoba Health. And then, of course, we were the first in Canada again to bring blood on board so that there is universal blood on board now, that's blood that can be accepted by any one of us. And you can just imagine the life-saving measures that are happening with that by being able to have blood, especially for a trauma patient, and be able to, you know, buy them that extra time instead of bleeding out. It is saving lives every day. Then we added Regina and Saskatoon bases as well. There, here, we had three bases in Alberta and then we established the agreement with Manitoba Health. And then Saskatchewan was like, well, we're right here in the middle and we need Starz services. So lots of good history there. So now we're six bases across three provinces and serving four provinces because we serve northeastern and southeastern B.C. as well, from the Grand Prairie Base and from the Calgary Base. Averaging eight missions per day now across those bases, eleven helicopters in total in the fleet and very close to surpassing forty thousand missions flown since that first fateful day. And I talked to you previously about how we have, there is international critical care competition each year, international. And we have participated for the past sixteen years. We hold our own internal competition to allow one team of two, all of our air medical crew, they compete against each other across all the bases in all the provinces, to allow only one team of two to go and represent Starz internationally each year, this particular international competition. So we have competed sixteen years. We have placed every single year that we have ever participated in. We've brought the cup home, six years. And this year, again, we won first place and brought the championship home. So let me assure you that the highest level of critical care is available to you when Starz is able to work with your emergency services. That's who we work with every day. So we are partners. We are life-saving partners. So I brought this, I bring this each year to all municipalities. Not much has changed on the expenditure side. The, most of the pie, two-thirds of the pie, continue to be the aviation and medical components that take up all of the expenditures. The smaller pieces continue to be administration costs, base operations, education, you know, where we talked about where we have those specific donors that are committed to that, to provide for that, and dispatch coordination. So when we're looking at the funding side, last year when I presented, we had shown that the government was at twenty percent. Now I want to first ensure you that there has been no change in the amount of funding that we receive from Alberta Health Services. This is still all in thousands. So we roughly receive just over seven million dollars a year from Alberta Health Services for block funding with that affiliation agreement that's in place to 2020. But because of increased costs, increased fuel costs, the fact that, you know, the carbon tax added, all these other kind of things, that's kind of brought down the percentage-wise of what we are receiving from government, but it is the same amount that we are receiving. So that leaves us eighty-two percent of about over thirty-eight... So that leaves us 82%, about over $38 million budget per year for three bases in Alberta that has to be fundraised. It's not an easy task, let me tell you. So we rely heavily, number one, our very largest funding source is the lottery, the STARS lottery. Last year when I presented for the year before, we had netted about $12 million. But everyone has been experiencing hard times, and so people can't buy as many tickets as maybe they had previously. It is still our largest funding source. We cannot forget that. So we netted just over $10 million this past year. Calendar campaign seems to hold its own, around just a little over a million. Like, I know that, you know, it's, eventually, maybe calendars will be completely phased out. But at the same time, there is a substantial amount of donors that just want to buy a calendar to support, and they want to know those patient stories. So it still holds its own, and just generating just over a million dollars. And the cyberdiscretion program, now we all know again, for the past few years, oil and gas and industry itself has been hit hard, and they've suffered a lot. And so that has been down the last couple of years because there's not as many permanent sites or, you know, even just non-permanent sites that have been registered. But now industry is starting to try and creep up again, you know. So there is building that we are getting a few more sites coming in again. And this is our only revenue generating program, working directly with industry for those sites. But it does not mean that that's the only ones that can use it. As I had mentioned before, we have a lot of municipalities that are looking, especially like well-established farmers, ranchers on their properties, that may want to register their sites and be a registered site for your area and for your county. You know, at $150 per year, they can be a permanent site, which is accessible to any of us that may be just driving by or an accident might have happened right there in front of it. That gives us lat and long location for any of your emergency protective services. So it's really a good thing for all of us. And the more sites we get registered, the more knowledge we have to share with all of our protective services. As well, municipalities use it for, if you have an annual rodeo every year, then just call in for $6 a day, and on that weekend for two days, $12 a year, you will have direct access to STARS, the STARS physicians. Any kind of a public event where there might be a possibility for an accident is a really good thing to just be able to put that into your calendar and call the Emergency Link Center and say, I want to just register, you know, our Vulcan rodeo on whatever weekend, you know, once a year. So keep those things in mind because it really can make a difference. Next, please. So let's have a look, I want to give you a good idea of what's actually happening in your area. So first we'll look at Vulcan itself. So I separated any of your scene calls, which would be in your actual immediate kind of five-kilometer radius, as well as your inter-facility transfer. So you can see you have consistently a fairly busy hospital here as well, that has some critical care needs, you know, where they need to get that patient out to a higher level of care. And then scene calls as well. So then within the whole area of Vulcan County, because we all travel, you know, a lot of these other areas where there may be scene calls, or heart attack, or stroke, or whatever the case may be, can be Vulcan, Town of Vulcan residents, and vice versa. So I wanted to break this down to give you a good idea. So when, you can see pretty much, if we took an yearly average, it's about 14 missions per year if we broke it out to an approximate average, which represents over $100,000 in service value for Vulcan County itself, including the Town of Vulcan. Gives you an idea of why we're asking you to continue to be our life-saving partners because it takes all of us in order to continue to have a service that we're pretty fortunate to have, available to us, and at no cost to us if we should find that we are having the worst day in our lives and we need it. So if we're talking Town of Vulcan with your immediate area scene calls and the inter-facility transfers, you're seeing about a 10-mission per year average right within Town of Vulcan, which represents about $70,000 in service value. So now, of course, that's not taking into account the helicopters, the, all the things that happen that are costs for base operations. It's just the mission-related costs on that average. Next, please. So, we have been discussing and discussing and researching and for years and years and years is what to do in order to be responsible to those we serve for the next 35, 40 years. And it became very apparent to us in the last couple of years, as our BKs, our wonderful BKs have been phased out of production. And we had one experience earlier this year where it's been very difficult to get parts, and we had to wait quite a few months for a part to arrive, which meant that one of our backups helicopters was down for quite a while. And we know that that's something that we cannot live with going forward. So we made the conscious decision and finally did have board approval that we will purchase three of these Airbus H145s. They're very comparable to the BK117s that has served us now for 33 years. Our BK117s are all coming off on like 34, 35 years old. It's time that we need to do something, and we need to be, we need to look forward, and we need to plan ahead and be proactive. And so, after much consideration about all different types throughout the world, but this particular model is used, more than 50% is used with helicopter EMS and the military throughout the world. So we're sure that we have made the right choice. And as I said, it is very much a workhorse, just like the BK117s. Model is pretty much the same clam shield doors in the back that open wide for, so it's all of the different components that we need. It's just the new and improved, greater, reliable, safer, more fuel-efficient model. Just like, I like to compare like, what if we had a vehicle that was 35 years old? And then we decided to get one that's brand-new, spanking new for today? You know, like, there is a lot of different things and improvements over those years. So what we're going to do in order to be ethically responsible again, we are going to go back to a unified fleet, one platform, which means we will not run two different types of airframe, two different types of helicopter. And it's very costly. We have found that when we did buy the larger AW139s. You have to run two different certifications, you have to have two different kinds of, yes?
I admit so.
Okay. There's just so much with that, you know? And so we are going to go back to a unified fleet. We are starting out with, we're going to purchase three using cash reserves and financing. And they cost about $13 million a helicopter. So the goal in the end, over five or six-year, multi-year pledges of a capital campaign, is that nine in total across the three provinces. Five for Alberta, which is one in every single base, and two backups that we will rotate between those three bases. Alberta, basically, whether it's communities, municipalities, individuals, anyone, we're responsible for trying to find money and raise money over the next five, six years for five. And then the same for the Saks, Saskatchewan, and Manitoba to raise their own money for their helicopters. And we want to just build one fleet at a time, like, we will add as we grow the money and raise the money, we will add one more helicopters to buying them all at once. Next, please. So I want to thank you so much for being one of our respected leaders. We want to thank you for your life-saving partnership, more so for your demonstration to your residents for your commitment to safety and to critical care excellence for them. Thank you with the standing motion for your $2 per capita each year, that you're recognizing us as a true protective services asset that works with your emergency services. We thank you for that. So together, we see every day positive results and thousands of lives saved in the course of the years. You know, we've been here 33 years, and we want to be here for our children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, 33 more. So we're doing, earning, we can't, we can't do it without you. So thank you. And with that, I would like to take this opportunity, basically, present to you the Town of Vulcan for being our life-saving partner, and hopefully that you are proud to show your residents that you are doing something very special for them.
Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, this is great that we're able to share with you. And I'm not sure how many years we've been a participant, but...
Just a couple of years.
Yeah, it hasn't been that long. Anyway, thank you very much. And thank you for taking the time to come out and...
Oh, no, thank you.
And I know that you've put a few miles on some...
It's all right. I have a few more to put on the rest of this week, so don't worry. Is it possible to have a photo?
You betcha. You got your camera phone on here, so. Advocate person.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you again for taking the time.
Oh, yes, no, it's my pleasure to come and see you.
Any questions, Paul? Once again, thank you very much for taking the time.
I did bring you a couple of calendars to your office, so I'll just leave these to...
Sure.
Okay, thank you again. Appreciate your time.
Thanks again.
Okay. Have a good evening. You too.
I hope the rest of your travel goes better.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Well, I'm here now. Now, the rest of the week is traveling the car, so it's all good.
Thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to, I guess we don't have any motions on delegation process yet, so we'll move on to the correspondence, a letter from MLA. Any questions on the letter from Mr. Snyder? Okay, moving on to...
Receive that for permission.
Yeah, sorry, I thought there was two in the one, but no, only a motion to receive for...
Receive for permission.
Laura, sorry. Paul. Okay, Laura had her hand up. No, that's fine. Anyway, any question on Laura's motion? Here and then on the paper? That's good, thank you. Okay, moving on to financial reports. First one, cash statement. Any questions?
Are we in a place that we usually should be at this time of year?
Well, I would have liked to have seen more in our current account, but...
It is coming, so...
But, yes, we're still in a good financial position, about stable at about 2.4.
I, this is, being you see for information?
Okay, Laura moves. Any question on Laura's motion? Here and then on the paper? That's good, thank you. Okay, year-to-date statement. And in October 31st, any questions on any of those?
I didn't see anything that jumped out and bit me. Any comments, Kim? Where we should be?
No, and because we've been going through the budget, we've, you probably saw you have up to date to November 20th, so you actually saw the changes that have happened for the 20 days from when this report was done. So, you know, we'll see a lot of movement at the end of this, moving the transfer to reserves, that sort of thing, will start to affect some of the expenses.
So move to receive for permission.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Any question on Paul's motion? Here and then on the paper? That's good. Okay, moving on to the current business, which is our operating budget. Everybody's had an opportunity to hear the information, and any questions on any of the categories?
Just wanted to know, the only change that we made was reflected in conversation from the last meeting, and it was the $10,000 for fuel that was, was not adjusted. We made sure to make that change.
So virtually a status quo?
Yeah. Really, there's line items that went up and down through the, throughout the entire budget, but you can see there's a $110,000 difference. And if you break it down to the simplest, it comes to hiring the consultant pool, and the $10,000 we put in for additional fuel. So the rest of the budgets were adjusted, line items that you saw up and down before.
Okay, any questions on this? Here and then, somebody wish to do it? Lauren?
As an interim?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, like Kim said, it'll be interim budget until, what, April, or...
Yeah, until we get the full assessment and you're ready to set the mill rate, because without knowing what the assessment does, if you were to set the mill rate now and it went up and down, it could majorly impact an operation budget, so.
Okay, so Laura moves this. Any question on Laura's motion? Here and then on the paper? That's good, thank you. Okay, seats to grow. Carmen's presentation. In my opinion, we, this is not our job to pick, our job is to get administration to pick who they so desire to do the, you heard her presentation, both from VIT side, the VTV side, and now the seats to grow side.
I guess from her letter, I didn't understand, did I miss an article in the advocate?
No, wasn't she referring to the council minutes that was in the advocate? When she was talking about ICOMs and that?
Yeah, I didn't quite understand. That's what I assumed, because it was in the paper, the council minutes were in the paper. Okay, so it was just from that meeting, and it had ICOMs, it was mentioned in it and stuff. I could be wrong, but that's what I assumed she meant by it.
Go ahead.
So for the purposes of this, basically what you guys as council, if there's value in recording the meetings and making them available, then direction from you guys to continue doing them, it's a lot of budget funding and a proposal would be paid from myself to do that. And I can, I'd happily bring back all the options to continue doing them.
And I think that's probably our best, you know, if we believe that it's, we'd like to still record it and publish it, whether we go with Carmen or whether we go with Joe Blow's, you know, I think that it gives us opportunity to allow administration to move forward, you know?
And your point's well made, that it's Ken's job, not ours.
Well, yeah, I mean, I appreciate that...
We have to pick up drugs for Stu.
Yeah, and I appreciate that she, you know, wished to address us, which is fine, I have no problem with that. I have, I have more issues with, and I appreciate it's her opportunity to do whatever she wants, but, you know, to run down your competition. And, but again, I think that's up to administration to bring back some recommendations and...
And I would like to clarify, because this was the only thing that was presented to council, I would like to clarify that any of the facts about ICOMs are absolutely untrue. We deal with Canadian affiliate, it's Canadian dollars. Yeah, our pricing is based on assessment, not just a given price that they give us. It's, that's why they're so successful in the municipal market, but I'm not here to defend them. But that was the only information they represented, so I wanted to make sure that you knew. And when I, when we do, I'll bring back proposals with, with recommendation on, on a value, if it's a service. And I guess that's, again, you guys need to decide if, if recording this meeting is a service you want to provide to people and at what cost.
I certainly think it's a service that, that's my feeling, that should be provided.
Yeah, like, I think it's incredibly important, A, for anybody that can't come out, or, you know, the people that do have one agenda item that want to review how it came up on council, but also as a counselor, in terms of going back, I will watch one and just make sure, you know, I mean, if there's that, I'm doing my due diligence and for clarification or what have you. So I definitely think it's worth a service continuing.
Okay. And there's what, 40 or 50 people? And there's what, forty or fifty people, won't you?
And average is about forty.
Not necessarily the same forty or fifty.
No, one of them.
I believe I'm one of them.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard to tell, but I mean, there is, there are people that are out there that definitely read it on a weekly or a two-weekly basis or, you know.
We have received folk calls when they have my calls to write.
So...
I think it's a reasonably priced, however we go, option to serve our taxpayers.
Yeah.
Because we certainly don't have forty sitting in the gallery.
Like Michelle says, and Carmen also highlighted, it's a, it's another avenue for people to, and to see what goes on and how we represent them. And, you know, again, like Laura said, if they, we don't have that many ever come to our gallery or to our annual meetings, but at least we do have people that are following us by doing, having it posted.
Well, and I think by having it posted alone, it kind of also really promotes and stands behind the transparency. You know what I mean? So it's everything that we have is a public record. You can see it, you know, our budgets, everything. So on one hand, it probably answers a lot of questions that a lot of taxpayers have even before they have to call or, you know, come in or write or whatever to ask.
Okay, so is anybody willing to make a motion to record?
I'll make a motion that administration, we can do the appropriate research.
Direction we give into administration to research and provide council with further information of the various options available. Thank you, Paul.
It says, and now, and then, and then it says it doesn't say a motion, so, I mean, you stole the motion of all, or all that area.
I, I hid it in there to see if you read all the way through.
I read the whole thing, but I still got caught on the page, a different page. Okay, so you heard Paul's motion.
Well worded.
Yes, well worded.
Now everybody that recorded saw it.
Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none on the paper? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the... Guarder Committee. Any questions on the recommendations?
That's twisted, right?
Stu was the only one that put his name forward, so...
Okay, good. So it's been recommended by the committee or the Director of Protective Services, so we need a motion.
I'll get that motion.
Okay, Laura moves, thank you.
To your turn. Yes.
Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none on the paper? That's carried. Okay, moving on to seven-four. Town office hours, closure hours.
And the reason why I bring it forward is it's not addressed in the, in the policy. So many times you close outside the policy, which is Stat holidays. Kind of hard to put Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve into policy because they move around in the week, so... So the request is to close the office on the twenty-fourth and a half-day on the thirty-first. And the reason for the half-day on the thirty-first is so that, you know, anybody coming in with the last of the year bill payment or anything, at least we're open for a half. We, we have very limited staff through there.
Okay, so George Lee moves this. Any question on George's motion? Hearing none on the paper? That's carried. Okay, seven-five is the...
Property tax.
Property tax. I, I felt that it'd only be fair that if we allow administration opportunity to come back with some information of other communities and what some of them are doing and why they're there now. And also, you know, to bring back our policy so that everybody has had an opportunity to look at the policy and, and...
The bylaw.
I mean, I'm sorry, by law policies, policies, and so everybody, that's my thinking anyway. I'm not sure what you folks think.
I move American, the administration to look into it.
And you can work it however you even like.
I'll, I'll provide the information from the Municipal Government Act. The copy of the bylaw and any, any information that we've, that we are currently doing that isn't outlined in that, and then some comparisons with other communities and bring it back for your information on it.
It'd be interesting to see what one of the larger centers, Calgary, that's where you're from.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's probably...
One noise.
Yeah, the tax notice that you get and that's it. I think it's probably more...
I'd ask for the comparison, because, yeah.
To, to the smaller communities that, you know, try to offer, you know, and it's unfortunate, you know, that something like this happens and, you know, it's understandable that things do get missed. And I think that's partly why I think that, you know, we need to all promote the monthly base because that would have, you know, it would have got caught quicker. Because, you know, we're lucky, we, some of us knew this, you know, mostly and, and knew that, know some of the circumstances behind it.
Yeah, there is, worth adding, because we're a small community. The majority of the stuff that we get to keep things up-to-date for tax is when tax certificates are issued. Most of the time when a state deals, the lawyer will contact us right away. There are circumstances with the probate on this one, but at any time, because we know everybody, we wouldn't charge for a tax certificate if anybody would have asked. And I just want to clarify that we were not given the opportunity. In some cases, most cases, if there is a delay in probate, what we do is, is we just don't add any additional penalty. We can do that. We, we just stop the penalty from being added to give out a certain amount of time. We just set a date to it. So if you need six months, it takes six months, we won't add penalty to it. We weren't given the opportunity in all three phone calls to give that information. So in a situation like this one, we would have said if it was a probate issue, time commitment issue, we would have given some time and not applied any more penalty. But the question was, give us that money back. We can't do that because once it's applied, it becomes part of the tax. And your bylaw and the M G A say that council cannot give tax unless it's equitable to the community. So I just wanted to clarify that, you know. And well, I'll bring more information.
So what we can do is make a motion to have administration bring more information back. And if we still desire, we're not applying any more tax in rears until after we have notified them back what our decision is.
So does that refer to what we don't handle, if you make that motion?
If we make that motion, so then we can stop the interest being added on to it. But that gives us an opportunity to have administration bring that back to us at the next meeting. If that's agreeable. Somebody wish to move that?
Is that...
Laura's already got that motion, so we're...
I'm sorry.
From the, and then if you would amend that to include that no further penalty, penalty be applied.
Kill us.
Until such time, and then tell council receives that information.
Okay, does that sound agreeable? Okay, any question on Laura's motion then? Hearing none on the paper? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to bylaw number fourteen-seventy-seven-eighteen.
He's waving his hand over there.
Okay, Mr. Magnuson.
I must excuse myself from this due to, very interesting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So noted that, that eight-eighteen, Mr. Magnuson left meeting.
Don't play with the toys in my office.
Okay, so this'll start this process to allow, to go to first reading, I guess. So that'll be advertised, and it's to change the land use bylaw to allow under highway commercials, C two, to add retail to it.
Yes.
Come on, you said on M P C.
I did. Nobody talked to it that way, did you?
Okay, any, so M P C had no issues with it.
No.
And so it's come forward to add this to it. At the last time we reviewed it, we probably should have added it too because there is right now some retail, could be classified as retail in C two right now, so...
An office. Yeah, the one that's office, it was important.
Okay. So, somebody wish to move this? Paul?
Go ahead.
Or George?
We both were entered at the same time.
Paul or George?
Ladies first.
Okay, George. Any question on George's motion? Hearing any problems with giving it first read? Hearing none on the paper? That's carried. Okay, so we can hold it loud and... Okay, thank you. So allow us back in at eight-twenty. We'll move on to committee reports. There is one there from the Canadian Badlands. Any questions on... Canadian Badlands minutes? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to ORSCs. Any questions on ORSCs, October eleventh meeting? Hearing none, the M P C November the twentieth. Okay. Somebody wish to file the committee reports? Nara? Any question on Nara's motion? Hearing none on the paper? Thank you. Okay, moving around to counselors, Mr. Taylor.
Okay, like most of us, you're all those. Once the joint meeting with the county, followed by pool meeting with the county, then we had a special pool meeting, and George Lee and I went to the M P C. And then I was at a golf course meeting, most of which was budget and finances, which is not finished yet. But one of the things that did come up of interest, there is a group in town who would like to have a Klingon warship. And one of the suggestions was to put it in the pond by the highway, the golf course. And I can see a lot of golfers taking shots at it. That's all I've got.
It shouldn't be over there.
Okay, any questions for Paul?
It's not a perfect world.
They all flick me.
Move on to council of all.
I was also at the joint, or the special pool meeting and the M P C. And we did have a water commission meeting, but it was through the, just it was by email. Only we elected Chair, which Paul still, Chair, and the Vice Chair, which Jamie...
Jamie.
Jamie Smith.
Jamie Smith. No change.
Yep, so, but we did all that by email, so. I had F C S S, and we got a copy of the budget. And they've cut down on their hours in the F C S S now because they said it's because of the lack of money they're getting from Champion. So now they don't have such money, so now they can't be there that many hours, so. So they are going to cut that down. They got their security system installed for the doors and the freezers and the fridge and all that stuff. Then they found out that they need a new door for the youth center to put a security system on. So that's going to cost like eight, or six hundred dollars to replace the door, to put the security on. The elections were held and they stayed the same as Betty Whitney's Chair and Jeanette Smith there's Vice Chair and Secretary. It's going to be closed from December twentieth to January second, if everything goes well with their move. If not, it won't be open on the second. It'll be open sometime January. So they're planning on doing some moving around in there. And it depends on how fast they can get their move done. So tomorrow night, we have the A G M for the Tourism Society, which will be just, and it's open to public. If anybody wants to come to, they can, and that on it. And I also had something brought to me about this Klingon ship. Also, I had somebody come to my house today and talk to me about it. They are looking for a written guarantee from the town saying that they're behind this project, and they're looking for a spot to put it. Because they've got everything lined up in a row with sponsors to help pay for it, stuff like that. And it's on a, a hold until they get this guarantee from the government.
It'd be kind of nice if they would send a letter.
Actually, it was brought up at a meeting, and Bonnie had promised the group that she would bring it to the next council meeting. But that came and went, so... So the person, they watched the, the meeting and seeing that it wasn't on a council meeting the last couple. So that's why they came to talk about it.
Need to come talk to them. So I can get them on, get, get something on the agenda.
But no, nothing officially.
Yeah, I haven't received anything official.
Yeah, they had left it in Bonnie's hands to bring, because she said, I'll take it to council, present it to council for you. So they left it with her.
Okay, I'll follow up with her and see what...
Okay, I want to. And, yeah, so that was, that was supported. That's all I have.
Okay.
Are we sure that that ship is just not, have its poking device on it, maybe it's already...
I said that. Why don't you just put something down there, that crushed garbage can or whatever it was in the movie? Put it down there and say it's in Coke. It's already done, but they, they didn't want to do that.
Any questions for George Lee? Hearing none, move on. Mr. Magnuson.
I too was at the joint's meeting with the county for preparation for the pool. I also had M P C meeting, but I was unable to attend, so George Lee kindly stood in for me. And, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Counselor comes.
I was also at the joint meeting with the county and the pool meeting, the special pool meeting. And I've had three library meetings. So the first was the basic meeting. Art night was a great success. They had over-doubled the amount of people, two extra tables, went over really well. They needed new battery packs for the security cameras because the old ones were starting to smoke and melt things, so it was time for new ones. The libraries can be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and they will be open Saturday hours, eleven to three, on the twenty-sixth. The second meeting was to work on the plan of service because it is up at the end of this year. And the third meeting was an in-camera finalizing some details because there was questions when we started the in-camera at the original meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Laura? Okay, thank you. It's ready.
So as well, I was at the joint budget pool meetings with the county, as well as the emergency town meeting on the fourteenth. Kim and I had the opportunity to go and with a couple others from our area, meet the new Director of Community Futures. Unfortunately, two days later at the Community Futures meeting we had, it was, he had to resign, so... We're patiently waiting with bated breath for our next Director, General Manager for Community Futures. So that was that first meeting and then second. As well, I had the B C C C R and Elder abuse meeting on November twentieth. And still we got, who's leading the initiative, Ruth Mueller, is an incredible lady, and she just always packs our meetings incredibly full of information. A lot of it was comparing some other comparable communities and seeing their structure because we did our mission and our vision, and now we're actually starting to get into the sort of nitty-gritty, man-made stuff. So that's coming along really, really well. And I had the two regular chamber meetings, basically same thing, just kind of getting all our administrative ducks in a row, as well as... The Chamber didn't run Black Friday at all, like not. But we did do Man the Giving Tree part of it, which was really, really successful. It was great to see there was three tubs, like yay, of stuff for the food bank and for, and gifts for families in need for our community. So that was really incredibly encouraging and engaging to see as the first year that we're doing it. So hopefully next year, the Chamber can have an even more prominent role and it can, you know, even better support our small business. So hopefully next year the chamber can have an even more prominent role and it can, you know, even better support our small business community. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Hearing none, Counselor Arshon.
This is something repetitious, but I was at the joint budget and the meeting, the special meeting. We won't have a Marcus Foundation meeting this week. People are away, et cetera, et cetera. And we will have our health and wellness on Wednesday. And Karen was able to get me into regional subdivision and development appeal board training on Friday in Lefford. For free.
For free? Free course.
And I did say I would come to the meeting on the thirtieth. But I'm in Lefford till five, so I will come as soon as I get.
Okay.
I might have to have a snack or something.
I won't break batteries.
Good, or would you like to try? No, so I will be coming, but that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Okay, moving on to me. I had a Sawa meeting in Land County with ATOL, which is a group of people that are looking to fund projects. And then Waste Commission meeting, we finalized the budget. And the budget mainly changed because of gas and tipage for us to haul our, our waste to Pitch Creek. And also the per capita change. So county probably went up the most because their capital or per cap, their population went up. Models probably went down, one of the bigger ones, model Champion, so. So that was the change in the budget. So I gave Karen a copy of the new budget. Recycling is still an expensive task. They, they did a pilot project on it where they took all the plastic that goes in there and divided it up and pulled all the number twos and anything that had any value and then the rest. And they, they calculated that we lose approximately twenty thousand dollars a year on plastic recycling. So until we get a better recycling program for plastics, it's not really worth. But they're still collecting it, but they're not sure what they're going to do with it. Which isn't much different than a lot of communities. Again, same as everybody else, I was at the county budget meeting, joint meeting, and then the pool meeting after. And then the special pool meeting. And thank you very much to everybody that could attend. I went to a Spock Days AGM, has nothing to do with town, but I went to it. Also Spock Days is a go. The only thing that did come out, which might come back to, to the Tourism Committee is that to contemplate, you know, someday getting the two back together again. So there'll be information come from Spock Days, you know, saying that, because there is, there is again a perception that Spock Days were the ones that asked the, that tourism to separate the two. That's not quite the way most of us perceive it or see it anyway. Then last Friday I went to the Sawa board meeting over in Brooks and things were looking pretty good. They still hope that they could get funding for the two programs that are still left, approximately four hundred thousand dollars as they've applied for, for grant funding. There is some communities that are, you know, saying that this project's taking too long. I suggested to them that if they would like to speed it up is that they come up with the four hundred thousand dollars and then we don't have to wait for the grants.
Million.
And.
Four hundred million.
Well, no, just the four hundred thousand to do the two grants. And then the, the four hundred million or five hundred million, hey, we'll still work on that. But anyway, I, I think that, I think it's the same as everything. It's, it feels like the project's going on and on and on, which it is, but it's just that we've worked off our grant funding for ninety-nine percent of our program, so. Then I went to the light, tree lighting and I probably should have said more, but the young lady that runs the second cup, she did a great job of saying what was going on in the community. And so I just tried the clapping, but it didn't turn the lights on, which I knew wouldn't. But I, I should have probably said, well, we're going to have to sing a song. Maybe got them to sing and then turn it on, but anyway.
Next year.
Next year we'll, we'll add more to it and make it more. But again, you know, unfortunately Mother Nature wasn't as kind to us as it could have been, but on one handed, but. So I talked to a few of the businesses that felt that it was already a successful day. The biggest problem was a couple of them felt that, you know, after six o'clock, the, the numbers started to drop off. But other ones felt that after it was, it was good too, so, you know. So there's pros and cons to everybody, but anyway, those are the ones that I went to. Any questions for me on any line on Spock?
Not directly with it, just wondering how it's going.
Oh, it's kind of waiting for me to do part of it, but the dish part is all manufactured. We just have to cover it with fiberglass and the, the.
Engines.
The, no, the engines are, are done, but the, what's that, the, the pod, I guess you'd call it, he's working on it. And so he hopes to have that all together. And then, then once the, the fiberglass is done on the dish part, then we'll put it together and then we'll take it out, put it on to the frame. And then we'll start on the other alterations to the frame. So it is coming. I, I think Gary figures that we have no problems being ready for the, the spring. We're going to try and do a couple of things different on it. We're going to try and make a spot for the person that's going to run the sound down beside the driver. And then the second thing that we talked about doing too was, is we'll move the smoke generators down from, out of the engines and just pipe them up into the engines so that they don't have to take apart and put the chemical in to make it. So that, that was the, the two just major things. The town crew, you know, will, once we get it kind of going again, then we'll do the wiring on it all up and put the lights on back on. Good. It is, it is coming. It's not as fast as Gary would like to see it. Gary wanted it farther along than what it is, but, but it is coming. But thank you for reminding us.
I have a question. Are you done? I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
I have a question. When we do our counselor reports, maybe once a month or something, can we put a thing in here for a, a question period? Like questions that don't necessarily relate to what the committees are, but just things that we've talked about at council and we're not sure where it's gone from there. We've made motions to do whatever. And because sometimes during the day you'd be doing something and it'll pop into your head, oh yeah, I wonder where we are with this project or whatever. And if we could do that like maybe once a month, like maybe every third council meeting or something.
I think even under the counselor report that, you know, again too, like I, I said on Spock Days, we have no town representative. But again, if you, you go to a function that you really aren't, you're there kind of representing the town, but you're not there representing.
Representing, yeah.
We'd like to hear about that too, you know, so that, you know.
Yeah, because I know, like, I was thinking like sometimes maybe like you could write, you could just jot things down sometimes, like this, this Klingon ship. You know, you could have just dotted it down and said, and then at a meeting just said, oh, can you tell me where we are with this?
Yeah, sure.
Because we haven't talked about it.
And Georgie, that, that was the, that was the intent by just changing it to council reports instead of committee reports like it used to be so that it can open you up to.
Oh, so you could just, you could just write down on a list of a couple of things and you'd like to ask?
It's your opportunity to report on council and your dealings. That is why we changed it to that.
And again, too, you know, like that, like you said, that, that request, I mean, that's the first I've heard of it, you know, officially. I mean, I've heard rumblings out there about this bird prey. And.
Well, I knew, I had remembered it, I came to council that time.
It's never been to a council.
Never been to a council meeting.
Hasn't it?
No, no. I, I know about it as well, but nothing has ever been brought to me to add to an agenda or. And I've, we received phone calls about it, we talked about it, but we've never had anything.
And it, it came up.
We need an official letter to come to.
And it came up at Spock Days, but it was never added to the agenda. It was just as we were walking out the door, so by the way, you know, I'd like to, well, you know, that's why we try and create the agenda so that you add it to the agenda, so there's a motion made or whatever. And so, yeah, no, I, that, the little area of council reports is your opportunity.
Okay.
I mean, I guess if you're on, on line, we'll have to step on you, but.
So you're a loyal.
That's right.
You don't give office a loyal.
You can't do a dance or anything or.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's why we changed that from, from committee reports to council reports. Because it allows you to report on your business on behalf of the town and anything, any concerns.
And ask questions.
That were brought forth.
We're, we're.
And why we changed the administrative reports so that you can ask questions on there. And that's why I changed the action list. You mentioned motions that had made in council. This has every motion that is still open and we're still working on is in that action list. So it's supposed, it's supposed to allow for that conversation at a council meeting.
Okay. All right, I'll start jotting things down there as I think of them.
All right, any other questions, concerns? If not, somebody wish to move counselor reports? Lyle? Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's clear. Okay, now we'll move on to the action reports. Action, right of this, should say, sorry.
Why are you whistling it down nicely?
Yeah, as you can see, I highlighted the two that, there was two that we actually couldn't have action on. One was obviously the machine was sold before, so we weren't able to purchase it. And then the second one was the motion that you made for the carriage at the, or for the hayride at the.
Black Friday.
Black Friday, I keep trying to say in my madness. They weren't able to, to get the insurance, so. The rest were done. We did, I do want to apologize, there, we blacked out the one for the cemetery signage. We received information and they responded that cemetery signs don't fit into their criteria. But we went back and took a second look and we actually found it in their policy. So we sent it back to them saying, it's in your policy. So we're hoping to get an answer back. So we had it marked off as being complete, but it's still in process.
I have to rewrite their policies.
Well, if they're not, even we can send them, there's, there's lots, like there was the Littleton Cemetery, I just went by it this morning. You know, says where the cemetery is, so it's on a.
Yeah. The funny part, we asked, asked for the CRC as a second thought to that motion and they identified with it. But they said cemeteries didn't. And again, we identified that it is in their policy, so hopefully we'll get an answer back right away. So I apologize for having that one blacked out. We got the information after I had submitted it.
Okay, any questions on the action items? Hearing none, somebody wish to file that one? Laura, thank you. I saw you got a call too.
Yeah, it's okay. Sorry, it's going up, so I'll find that or.
Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that all in favor? It's clear. Okay, moving on to the admin.
You've all had a chance to read that my report, so I'm not going to go through it again unless you have any specific questions about it. I did want to take the opportunity to talk about two things that I did get the information for the pool in Pitchaboot. And I just got the information, so I'll put it together and email it out to you. It's a full copy of their drawings, their cost breakdown and the RFP if you're interested. If I do the RFP, I have to send it two emails. But if you want just the cost breakdown and the drawings, I can send that in a single email. So I'll try to send those out right away. And then I wanted to, I didn't, we didn't get a chance to put it in the, on the agenda for this meeting. And the MPC reviewed fees and fines for breaches in the development, the land use bylaw. And so the MPC's brought it forward. We have to pass the fees bylaw. Theoretically should do it before the end of the year, so I'm going to be bringing it in the December tenth meeting. But I just wanted to make you aware of the changes. I'll send it out in advance so you can review it. But those are the only changes, are the ones that the MPC reviewed. And we just changed the rates of the staff to an average of what the QB agreement is. And we added the line, sorry, the crack filler pump, we put a rental rate on it and then changed out the Hino with the Kenworth truck. So that'll be the only changes and I'll send it out to you this week.
And that's just policy.
That one, that one is an actual bylaw. So yeah, it will have to, and I do apologize, I was going to have it, I actually have it predated today, but we didn't get the stuff together. So it will come December tenth.
And then, you know, there's.
There's nothing wrong with taking it into January as well because we're not actually changing it. If we are changing utility rates and that.
That's a piece of my.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Kim on any of that?
Anything further from media other than twenty twenty?
No, no, they're, they're watching the political climate quite strongly, quite. The wording that I got from David is that they're watching what's going on happening in Ontario quite a bit right now because of the change in government there. But their plans remain the same.
Good.
Anything else on Kim's? Hearing that, so we wish to move. George Lee to follow. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing that, all in favor? It's clear. Okay, before we adjourn, I'd like to have Kim's CEO evaluation done for December the tenth. So if you haven't handed in your evaluation, please go to get it to Karen. And if you have, thank you very much. And. Anything else? Somebody wish to adjourn? Michelle? Thank you very much. Any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing that, all on paper? It's clear.